Next on our agenda, we have a public comment portion of the meeting. And if anyone would like to address the board, how you may approach the podium, state your name, and we would like to hear what you have to say.
Richard Waldorf, 20 Elm Street. I'd just like to say that on the matter of the cannabis sales, I would very much like you to opt out at this time. I believe there is not currently, and by all reports, not currently enough information out there. I've heard that some of the literature from the state is well over 100 pages long, which would mean that I doubt if anybody's had the chance to read all that and study this matter. And if you opt in now, you're stuck with it forever, whatever it is. But you now have the option to opt out, and at this time, I think you should opt out for further consideration in the future, rather than be stuck with something that nobody is quite sure of, what is going to be the rules and regulations put down by the state. And as our attorney is not here tonight to comment on this, I think it is a very good idea to opt out at this time. You can always opt in later. Thank you.
My name is Bruce Winters. I live on Dunning Avenue here in the Village. Board members, hopefully, most of you've got a copy of this.
Can you please state your address, please?
20 Dunning.
Thank you.
As a retired pharmacist who is knowledgeable about pharmacology, pharmacology is the action of drugs once they get in the body, I see mostly disadvantages to marijuana. There are a number of purported medical uses for the drug, but the benefits are mostly anecdotal, not verified in clinical studies. I asked an out-of-area friend who's a user what it's like at places that sell legally. He said it's similar to what you see at an OTB facility, a bit seedy in appearance. We witnessed that a few years ago here in the Village when we had the OTB. My friend still buys off-market because the taxes make the legal source too expensive for him. I see no socially redeeming value to marijuana, period. In my opinion, the state has sold its soul to the devil when it decided that some additional tax revenue is worth the risks of addicting people to things like recreational drugs and gambling. I can't imagine the revenue to the Village would be significant. Marijuana can be a gateway drug, and that is documented. The state even acknowledged this much when they approved these vices. The Village of Webster shouldn't be an enabler. I hate it when people use the legal status of alcohol as a rational reason for legalizing recreational marijuana. My late grandmother, infinite wisdom, would have said, "Two wrongs don't make a right." I don't want to be part of the silly game called desperate pursuit of tax revenues. The answer is to instead look for ways to reduce expenses, fraud, misuse, and abuse of tax dollars. Turning devices is the wrong answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Pete Rolder, 59 Dunning Avenue. Good to see all of you. Same topic, but mostly a question, which of course is rhetorical, you don't have to answer it, but the town is considering the idea also in conjunction with this decision-making process about how their zoning regulations would be altered to accommodate these facilities. I do watch all the videos, so I do have some idea what you talked about in the past, but I'm not sure that this subject has been broached in anywhere in depth, or at least that I've heard of. Have you considered the idea of crafting a local law that would actually tell, kind of make it so that we have these facilities, these specific parts of the village, sort of like we do with adult uses? Because that is something after the town is approaching as well, to try to address the proximity to things like churches, schools, and so all of which we have here, and very much in the center of the village. So, thank you.
Item number three, resolution to adopt proposed local law number one of 2021, titled, quote, "Opting out of licensing and the establishment of retail cannabis dispensaries and/or onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the Incorporated Village of Webster," unquote. All of you have, and have had this down for actually a month, the proposed law in front of you. I will read this proposed law, and at that point, the open court discussion, if there is any, resolution of the Village of Webster Board of Trustees to adopt the proposed local law number one of 2021 of the Village of Webster titled "Opting Out of Licensing and the Establishment of Retail Cannabis Dispensaries and/or On-Site Cannabis Consumption Establishments Within the Village of Webster." Whereas pursuant to New York Cannabis Law 131, a village may adopt the local law on or before December 31, 2021, subject to permissive referendum, that request the Cannabis Control Board of the State of New York to prohibit the establishment of retail cannabis dispensary licenses and/or onsite cannabis consumption licenses within the jurisdiction of the Village of Webster. Whereas by resolution, the Village Board, actually November 9, 2021, the Village Board of the Village of Webster established a date, time, and place for a public hearing to consolidate enacting proposed local law number one of 2021 with respect to opting out of licensing and the establishment of retail cannabis dispensaries and/or onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the Village of Webster. And whereas a notice of this public hearing was published in the Webster Herald, it was posted on the Village Bulletin Board at the Village Hall at 28 West Main Street, Webster, New York, and whereas a public hearing was held by the Village of Webster Board of Trustees on November 23, 2021, and whereas all interested persons were heard, whereas the Village Board of the Village of Webster has determined that the adoption of proposed local law number one will not affect the environment and therefore is not enacted within the meaning of the state environmental quality review law, whereas it is in the public interest to enact proposal local law number one of 2021. Therefore, now therefore, being enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster as follows, being enacted by the Board of the Trustees of the Village of Webster, New York, as follows. Number one, legislative intent, it is the intent of this local law to opt the Village of Webster, New York, out of hosting retail cannabis dispensaries and/or onsite cannabis consumption establishments within its boundaries. Two, authority, this local law is adopted pursuant to New York Cannabis Law 131, which expressly authorizes cities and villages to opt out of allowing retail cannabis dispensaries and/or onsite cannabis consumption establishments to locate and operate within their boundaries. Three, prohibition pursuant to Section 131 of the Cannabis Law, the Village of Webster hereby requests the Cannabis Control Board of the State of New York to prohibit the establishment of cannabis retail dispensary licenses and usages and the establishment of cannabis onsite consumption licenses and usages within the jurisdiction of the Village of Webster. Item four, permissive referendum pursuant to Section 131 of the Cannabis Law, this local law is subject to a permissive referendum governed by Section 24 of the Municipal Home Rule Law. Section five, item five, severability, if the provisions of any article, section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, or clause of this local law shall be judged invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such order or judgment shall not affect or invalidate the remainder of any article, section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, or clause of this local law. Item six, effective date, this local law shall be effective upon filing with the Office of the Secretary of State. That is the local law as read. Is there any last comment or opinion or commentary that anybody on the board would like to make?
Can you opt out?
Correct.
So if you opt in at a later date, you're going to have to vote again?
We would rescind or revise local law number one, and it would be, you would have to go through a permissive referendum, you'd have to go through the same public hearing.
I guess I, me, I did opt in, but I don't want the dispensaries. I don't want it all. I just don't, it's almost like when Pete was talking about changing, you know, LMT, changing all of this stuff, this is what's going on right now. That doesn't mean that someone that uses cannabis is going to use anything else. I mean, we've got enough alcoholics and backers here that have caused us a lot of damage here in the Village. And I just don't see where this is horrific. It isn't you use cannabis, so you're going to go right to heroin. That isn't how it works.
I think that there's a, a lot of us might have an issue with the moral part of this, whatever your own personal beliefs are, whether they be, you know, your own usage maybe, or your religious belief, or.
Right.
And things like, we're not supposed to do that, or, to me, to me, the bars have been around for a long time. The liquor and alcohol in the bars can cause people to abuse it. So alcohol is a gateway to using more alcohol or stronger alcohol. All right? And that's one case in point. And the next one would be, I would rather see it sold at a regulated dispensary in our village, rather than seeing the sleazy people that come around selling black market items, narcotics, behind gas stations and all this stuff, and perhaps causing trouble that way. So, for me, I would say opt in and opt out of establishment that would use it in. So I got one in and one out.
Well, that's kind of.
That's what Judy said. I just, I can't see, I heard Bruce's comment, and I can't see where it's really, yes, any drug is a gateway to a stronger drug, no matter what it is. And it doesn't necessarily mean that people who try marijuana or use it on a regular basis, it doesn't mean that they're going to go on to using heroin or something else.
Right, even if they're using just marijuana, if it's not in the Village of Webster, they're not going to stop using it. It's part of our populations, which now we have some people come to speak to us here. Remember the moms that came there? Kids were getting in their cars after school and driving to the city, right after the bell rang.
That's a point I was correct.
To go into the city and deal with people and all sorts of stuff.
I don't think that it's.
Correct.
It's not.
They grow it at home.
So that's, since Carl's point, they grow it at home, but, you know, we didn't.
They have to smoke it at home.
We didn't make a leave. The people are going to smoke it or they're going to smoke it.
Yeah.
How about it? People who drink it, you can hear me, I'm a lamas person here, I don't need to know.
I can.
So, I agree with you.
You know, it's going to be more expensive at these dispensaries.
There's so much.
And that'll create a competition with the black market stuff.
Yeah.
But you still have.
Well, you have to.
You have regulations.
Regulations.
With the stuff that you're buying on the street, you don't know what it's laced with, what it contains.
I did talk to Don, yeah, about some of that, too. More about what we talked about. I don't think we know enough of the rules and the regulations. I know they said there's 128 pages of information and another 58-page something or other. I just don't think we have enough information. I'd like to have more, but I would still, I'm not against it. I just don't want dispensaries and everything here right now.
Let's wait until we know.
Can we?
You cannot opt out after December 31st. There is no way to opt out.
But even if you opt in, but then say, "No, we will not have," we can say, "No, we're not going to have any dispensaries, we're not going to do it."
No, you're opting in for dispensaries, but out for consumption, places where it's consumed. That's what you said.
You can have retail. You can have one or the other, or both.
No, I don't want to go.
You can have one or the other, or both. But to me, to me, I don't think that there is enough in terms of information yet, in terms of regulation of even sale.
It's certainly not worth any revenue. I mean, we're not going to.
Well, no, it's only one, 2.5, they're saying that you're going to get in, so that's not even a good.
If.
No, that wasn't, I just, I guess I wanted more information. I didn't feel like I had enough, and I haven't, I don't have anything to read to explain it. I'm not against it, just I, one of these, I'm not against it, so.
Frankly, I'm more, I guess not more, but most concerned that New York State allows you to have five pounds at your house.
Yes.
Five pounds.
Yes, crazy.
I don't know how long you're planning on staying at home, but I guess if you're smoking five pounds.
You got longer.
It's crazy.
Yeah. Did you, have you read?
Yeah, you look up laws in New York, there's a whole section in the Cannabis Law. Somebody had a question earlier, I don't want to interrupt you, but somebody had a question earlier, it's, you cannot have a retail dispensary within 500 feet of the school, or school grounds, it's called, or 200 feet of a house of worship.
So there's really limits where they can impel anyone?
Well, there are some challenges to that, too, though, about, you know, definition, you know, you would think that definition of a house of worship is pretty clear, except the Harmony House hosts services on Sunday. Does that make that now a house of worship? I would think for at least Sunday it does, and I can't imagine that they're going to move the store every Sunday. It's more than 200 feet away from it, so.
Yeah.
Maybe that, but I do understand also, I remember reading, I don't see it here, that there's certain, you can have zoning regulations, but you can't say, "Yeah, we're going to opt in for retail dispensaries," and I make it impossible for them to go anywhere.
Right, right.
So, but there are certainly, there are limits, you know, with the schools around, and I think certain preschool programs take care of, I don't think qualified, but preschool programs and things like that that meet the definition of educational, of school grounds. It's talked about.
I mean, Village just isn't that big. You've got all kinds of schools and churches and.
Me, if, right now, not knowing, because even the state and the group that they're putting together, who oversee this, is very, very young in terms of, you know, their getting together, in terms of what they've put out, it would seem to me that it's easier to opt back in, once there's a clear understanding to what their rules and regulations might be, as opposed to right now opting in and never being able to opt out.
Do you know the Pittsburgh opt-out?
You're right.
You know, the Village of Pittsburgh opt-out.
I remember that. I guess I agree that there should be a mandatory vote.
So it seems like there's too, I understand, too much of the people aren't 100% positive.
We got to wait a month, do we get more information? Wait a month.
We can opt in if we want. That's right. We can opt out right now, but we can opt in anyway.
He's saying, he's saying, say, you know, now, work on the zoning, and what that would look like, and all sorts of things, and then, then we can opt back in.
Once we get more information, like you want more information.
Well, the information's there. We can say, "You guys, you have to do the research, it's there." Because you have to do it. We can't sit up here and say, "I want more information," because no one's going to hand it to you. It's there, it's just we got to read it. So it is there, just kind of. But, gee, hold on. Let's see if we can figure out the zoning pieces and what that would look like. And once we figure all that out, we may say, "Oh, my God, the only place I could put it, you know, was on our roof, and it doesn't make sense. It can't be here, it can't be here, it can't be here, it could be somewhere else." So.
Well, that's kind of what I looked at with Village, and we just don't have too many choices, I think.
And do we know on the town, would it, or this week, or next week?
The 16th.
Would be nice if we were.
You can wait until the next meeting to vote, because it just has to be decided by December 30th. So if you want to push it off till the next meeting, you can. And you don't need, I don't know if you've heard, just wrong, but if you decide to, if you decide to opt in, you don't have to have the new stuff, you just, you just motion, you just take the motion to advance.
You don't have to do anything.
And then it's done.
Get down, so you don't have to do it.
Yeah.
Right? It's an automatic thing if you do not decide to opt out. But to me, in terms of how I feel about it.
You know how you're concerned.
Even if you're, even if you're looking for more information, in terms of what, what can you do, how can you regulate, can you expand some of those areas if you wanted to? I don't think you can direct them, then you have, then you can look at what, you know, what would you like to do with it. You can't go to residential, so we have industrial area, and what would you do?
So, so, opinion is we should vote out right now, work on the zoning piece, and that would be the decision?
Personally, that would be my realization, not just jump in without knowing what the options are.
When I said what I said, I was just trying to imagine what everyone is thinking about that, you know? I mean, those are points that you have to think about before you vote for it. And I agree now that we should opt out now with the opportunity to opt in later, once we get more information, once we read up a little more about it, come to a better decision, maybe by Tuesday. It's, I mean, we're not, we're not, yeah, we're not, it's.
No, you're not, you're not using heroin.
No.
But do you think anybody that's overdosed on heroin lately didn't start with marijuana? You know, I'm not saying everybody that smokes marijuana goes to heroin, but I think that everybody that does heroin probably started with marijuana or something else. They didn't just jump into heroin.
It's contention.
You know, I'm just, I don't know.
Why don't you talk to a substance abuse professional and get yourselves educated on that aspect of marijuana? Speak to a professional and have them give you an education on it, so that you know.
You can get my daughter right here, that's what she knows.
The usage is going to happen whether or not we have.
It just depends on your moral makeup.
It says right now, if it's legal to possess up to five pounds, and et cetera, and it's just what do you want your community, how do you want it to, how do you, what do you want your community to look like?
Well, what do you think it's going to look like?
You're not going to fix it one way or the other?
You're not, it's.
They're going to do what they're going to do.
It's the moral makeup of any certain person.
Well, I bet, I haven't turned over the gas.
I doubt it.
Well, at any rate, this is the motion on the table, and it is to adopt this resolution.
Did anybody make the motion? Who made the motion?
He hasn't asked for it yet, sir.
Well, then there's no motion on the table.
Excuse me. I am going to, at this time, ask for a motion to adopt this resolution, propose, excuse me, to adopt proposed local law number one of 2021, titled "Opting Out of Licensing and the Establishment of Retail Cannabis Dispensaries and/or On-Site Cannabis Consumption Establishments Within the Incorporated Village of Webster." Is there anyone who would?
I'll make that motion.
Supposed to take it?
Okay, this is a motion to adopt. Okay, trustee Valkeen? Trustee Alita? Oh, sorry, I messed that up. I'm sorry.
Just, I'm sorry, to clarify, should you pick one and/or for the?
But, yeah, if you're doing one, aren't you doing one right now?
I think the wording said and/or, so I think you need to select, say, we're opting out of retail establishments and adult-use locations, or?
Oh, yeah, that's what I was kind of sitting around, but I think if you should, it's kind of, he's right.
Yeah.
Well, I think if you just modify a motion and say that you're going to do, opt out of retail dispensaries and adult-use consumption locations, that is clear. It's not just an and/or, it's not one or the other, if that's what your intent was.
That currently would be my agenda.
Are you talking to him?
So, can we modify?
I'm asking.
Why don't you be calling me, because he was supposed to be watching the meeting from Florida.
You have to go, he said you have to do the way it is written, you can't change it now. That's the way you would, you have to do it that way. Because then you have to do it in a public hearing.
And/or onsite cannabis consumption.
And/or. You're prohibiting and/or.
That would cover both.
Yeah. You cannot change the wording of the proposed local law, or you would have to do a new public hearing.
We would have to change these
You can't.
You can't without a public hearing.
Yeah.
It's going to change. We can't go down there like this, it's too vague, it's
You can't, you can't change it, but you don't have enough time.
We don't have
It has to be posted, it has to go over paper, it has to
What is the time for?
Yes, you have to do it.
Well, if you vote
It needs to be adopted by the end of the second, but there's not enough time to have a public hearing, you'd have to Good, it's that way for the next meeting, and then you could vote the same night, but we have to get it through the paper.
No, no, to me, it says to prohibit the establishment of or onsite cannabis consumption.
And/or means both are prohibited, according to that.
Well, if you
So, we're good.
That's why you need to pay the big bucks. If you don't have a dispensary, you're not going to How are you going to have an adult-use establishment if you don't have any adult that smoke there?
You can get five pounds of it.
Carl tells us how it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we, I, I'm going to start that vote over, okay? Okay, so, Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Anyone ever second it?
Yes, Mayor Byers seconded it.
Oh, you did?
I did. No one else seemed to speak up, I did.
I didn't hear you, you know, you're yelling.
I rarely second anything.
That is true, that's what
How'd you vote? Not neutral. I'm living switching right now.
Wait, wait, wait. I need a Mayor Byers first.
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
I said aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Motion passes.